Buddy, good evening. Well, we got a packed house. All right, so if I could have all of my, who are my troops that are going to be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? If you all could make your way right up here, feel free, this is going to be a party. We're going to wait for you. Uh oh, I know some of these children and I'm a little nervous right now. What's up kiddos? All right, make your way here. So you see right here the cameras? The millions of viewers at home right now are watching you live. So here, come on in, but kind of smush. We're looking right here. All right, so you guys are going to be live on TV. Come on over here. Kind of smush in, act like you guys are friends, all right?
Everyone in Livonia is watching.
We just heard that there's 3 million people. All right. So, yes, all right. Everybody in the audience, obviously we have some help. If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by these awesome scouts. All right, hang on, wait for it, let me get in position and then lead us off. Got it, girls, boys? Well done. Does that give you guys some patches? Does that get you a patch or something? I don't know, or maybe some cookies or something. Hey, you guys can funnel that way, good job. You guys are going to go viral because of all the people watching at home, all right? Listen, anybody that's been to a council meeting knows that we definitely have fun and today is no other. I'm going to let them kind of make their way out. All right, well, since Livonia is a poppin' city, we've got some accommodations and special tributes to give out. We did hear that our Livonia Palm did win states, am I right on that?
Yeah!
So with that, I'm going to hand it over to our Vice President. She's going to kind of run through. And then we'd like you guys to come up and we'll get a good picture. Thank you, guys, honestly, was it a, how many, who did you guys end up beating in the finals? Are they good?
Where are they from?
Elite? Listen, Livonia won, right? All right.
So they're not so elite, is what I'm hearing.
All right, here you go.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. So Livonia City Council would like to present accommodation today to Livonia Palm for becoming the Division One State Champions. On behalf of the City of Livonia, Michigan, the Livonia City Council is honored to recognize such an outstanding accomplishment three years in a row, huh? We are very proud of your continued success, as I'm sure everyone in Livonia is. Thank you for representing Livonia so well. And if you will join us up here, we'll do a pick. Mr. McCullough and I will lead the cheer.
Oh my. Did we leave you enough room? Sorry.
We were trying to confer on our votes.
Congratulations, girls. We'll see you next year for number four. All right, Erin, you're up next. All right, so Erin, it's funny, I went to high school with Erin. I've known her, she probably can tell you stories that I don't want anyone else to know, but that's fine. But Erin has basically a nonprofit, One Eyed Girl Pet Care. And who's, and if you want to give like a quick overview on how you got here?
Yeah, basically, I just started a local pet care business in Livonia and named it after my Lola here who has one eye. And we also are raising cancer funds this month. I am a triple negative breast cancer survivor. So, thank you. You can find the link on all of our socials. We're on Facebook, Instagram, Nextdoor, pretty much everything. We have a website too, just www-oneeyegirlpetcare.com.
And with that too, we're going to ask to, we'll get a picture and then, listen, it's all about spreading awareness, so we're going to ask our city to see if we can post some stuff with the picture, some information. Erin reached out, she goes, hey, can you spread this out on your social media? I said, I could do you one better. You gotta bring the pup in and we're going to get you a quick picture.
Thank you, thank you for having us.
She's doing great, but let's give them one more round of applause. We're going to get a picture. She's doing, she's doing so good.
Awesome, thank you, everyone.
Awesome, thanks, Erin.
May as well stay here. I gotta start going to work. Erin just said I used to work for Cardwell Sports.
That's hilarious.
All right. All right, now with that, it's always fun. Like I said, these meetings, we have a party all the time. Now we're going to get into more of the business section. So again, everybody, Livonia Palm, congratulations. I know Erin's leaving. It's always funny to see all the exciting things that happen in our city. So keep up the great work. We'll see you for number four, hopefully, right?
Mr. President, to the Livonia Palm, any Orioles here tonight? Any Orioles? No? There we go, go Orioles.
Orioles.
In the moment.
Yeah, the Orioles.
Well, just stay, is it something you said?
See you, guys. All right, well, welcome to the 2012 regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be on March 31st. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Donavich.
Here.
Vice President Tashnick.
Here.
Councilmember Buzinski.
Here.
Councilmember Scheel.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Toy. President McCullough.
Present. And I just did that because of, I think Jolly, I just think it popped in my head. So we show all, we show all members of council here. I'm now going to entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on February 24th, council.
So moved, support.
I have motion by Vice President, support by Linda. Any comments from the audience on the minutes? No? Okay. Anything from the audience or from council? No? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye, and the minutes carry. Jumping right into audience communication, this is set aside 30 minutes for items that are not currently on the agenda. If you'd like to make your way to the podium, name, address, and you get three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Reinhardt. I live at the Alitha Phipps Apartments on Farmington. And I'm here this evening to offer a couple of comments about the Alfred Noble Library Building. I actually worked in that building for three years when I was hired as a librarian in 1989. It's a long time ago, but even at that time, that building was always cold in the winter. It had an acoustic problem and, in my opinion, the architecture was lacking for a public library. I did go on and work at the Carl Sandburg Library and at the Civic Center Library, which were delightful buildings to work in. But I just, I just wanted to put in my input. And I had, I started my library career actually in Toledo and I've worked in various libraries there also. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. King?
How you doing? Steve King, 33950 Coventry. Okay, I attended the second floor meeting last week, Laura's Committee Meeting. And I learned more in that meeting than I have in the last 10 council meetings. So I wanted to just talk to the candidates that are running. I think there's about seven candidates running for council. If you come to these meetings and you think this is what it is to be on council, this is more or less a perfunctory performance. I mean, they do things that is kind of rote. So if you want to learn what it's like to be a council person, you got to go to those meetings upstairs on the second floor. That's where all the information is put out there. They're informal, there's, it's unbelievable. You learn so much of what's actually going on in the city. So I just wanted to put that out there. Secondly, beautiful weather today, all the snow has melted. Unfortunately, once that snow goes away, it leaves behind mountains of litter and trash. We have a serious, serious litter problem in Livonia. And it, as people drive through the city or come in here to work or to open businesses, it's embarrassing. So I'm asking you look at, that you look at your ordinances and any business that sells consumables has to provide a trash receptacle either inside the store at the exit door or outside the store. And give people at least an opportunity to throw their trash away. And I know this works because this is what they did at the, at the store at Seven and Middle Belt. They, that was the worst parking lot in the city over there by Kohl's and Walmart over there. And there was just mountains of litter. And I was over there recently and there's probably about 30 trash cans outside. They got about 20 more in the parking lot and it's made a remarkable difference. So that's, that's something that I hope you'll consider.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. King. Hey, Mr. Martin.
Well, hello, everyone. Christopher Martin, resident of the great state of Michigan. I'd like to go back in time a little bit. A couple of meetings ago, I had spoken about a little piece of history that had occurred on Five Mile. And this is from the summer of 2023. This is when a individual in a wheelchair was out in the middle of Five Mile, in the Harrison Road exit there, in that intersection. And a nurse went out to try to get him back at the Majestic Care Facility. She was struck and killed. So I mentioned just recently, a couple of meetings ago, that I experienced the same thing and the fact that there was a guy in a wheelchair, every white guy, out in the middle of the road. And I asked at that particular time that either the law department or the police chief go over and have a sit-down talk with who's ever supposed to be in charge. Did that ever take place before I go on to another item? Do you know anything about that ever, anyone going over there, let's say? Any, no? Okay, perfect. Here's one of our ordinances, okay? I'll be really quick because I don't, I know that Mr. Donavich wants my three minutes to expire. But one of the, one of our ordinances here says the Department of Law shall be represented at all meetings of council, and they are. Other city officials shall attend council meetings on request of the council. So on request of the council is the term. So I really want to, somebody put forth that the police chief go over and maybe have a talk with who's ever supposed to be in charge at Majestic Care there and come back and give a report. And you can vote on it later on, or you can vote on it now or immediately thereafter, audience communication is. I'd like somebody to have a little bit of understanding, let's say, to the nurse that was run over and killed, okay? So anyway, that's, that's what I would like to have happen. You have an ordinance right here that you can do that exact same thing and I left a copy of it up there. So that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Dennis Guzman, 34682 Beacon Street. The neighbors around there were wondering why nobody got notification about five acres behind our building or our land being developed. That's one of the things we were wondering. Two is, there's probably been about 10 of us that actually have contacted the city to see what was going on there. Nobody will be able to give us an answer. The only answer we get is from the construction guys chopping down the trees. So I don't know why, this is a big secret. And then third is, how do we get a notification about something being built on there? That's the things that we would like to be addressed.
If I may, where exactly are you speaking of?
It's Stark and Plymouth roughly, by the railroad tracks. There's about five acres, maybe seven acres back there. And somebody has just leveled all the trees that were back there. So something's going on, something's being built. In my opinion, nobody levels 12 acres or seven acres of trees on a potential build.
Can you do me, so right on the dais, there's a little, there's a business card right up, right in front of you. Give that number a shout tomorrow, it's going to get to Sarah. Give the information that you have and we'll try to get you some answers.
Okay, because we've called and we've actually had people come down here and everybody says, we don't know. Nothing against it, it seems like it's a government project that nobody can know about, so.
I don't know. So no, please, yeah, try, go this angle, we'll get you some info.
And contact who?
It's, it's going to go right to Sarah, she's our office manager.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll get it to the department heads to try to find out what's going on.
Okay, thank you very much.
I appreciate you coming out and letting us know, thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hello, Joe Pecat, 9610 Roseland, Livonia. I just want to say the sign for Say the Library is faded in front of my house and I just hope you keep it. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further audience communication? Seeing none, I'm going to jump into council communication. Councilman Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the pleasure of announcing the February 2025 retirees. We have two retirees from the City of Livonia. Robert Carver was a maintenance supervisor in the Housing Department for 17 years and one month. And then Kimberly Buckholz Lewis was a public service worker too in the Roads Department for 34 years and 10 months of service. So two city workers that have worked for a long time in Livonia. We're very fortunate to have all the city employees that make the city go round and round. So 34 years, that's older than most of us on city council. So thank you to, thank you to Kimberly and Robert for your service in the administration and City Livonia and thanks to all the city employees that continue to make this city great. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything else, council? Councilwoman Buzinski.
Yes, so as we saw, we had a lot of troops. I called it Scout Day at City Hall. We had three different troops, so I just want to recognize them individually. Girl Scout Troop 77691. And I got some Girl Scout cookies. Industrial, the industriousness of our Girl Scouts here in Livonia, they sent us a letter saying, could you buy us cookies? So I did and we'll be giving those to our first responders here in Livonia. So I did a tour with them. And Boy Scout Troop 907 and 1640 around City Hall to help them with their democracy badge. And I reminded them as well that, you know, we do have, now I'm blanking, six, five? Five stations, six?
One station?
Yes, five, five. We do have a number six, that's why I was confused. Five fire stations and our police station and we have our reserve officers here in City Hall. So if you ever have treats, I know that they do appreciate them. So I wanted to give a shout out to them and our troops and their parents who also came. It was a fun afternoon. And also say, my next coffee hour is March 22nd at the Civic Center Library. That's a Saturday, 11 o'clock. It's open to everyone. I provide a council update about things that have happened, including things that have happened at our committee meetings. The guest this month is Library Director Kristen Edson, who will be talking about library programs, the future, it's Q and A, it's casual. We have Looney Donuts if you want to come. Children are always welcome. Also on the library front, there is a library card design contest happening now through March 31st. All ages are welcome to submit their artwork and there will be selections from three different age groups. So if you are an artist, an aspiring artist, or just want to get creative, feel free to enter. The information is on the library's homepage.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Vice President and I got Councilman Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things, I just wanted to give a shout out to SPN Survivors. They had their Moving with Moose kickoff last Saturday. Councilmember Buzinski and I were there, as were a lot of people in the community. It was a great event. I forgot to bring the moose with me tonight. The moose has been traveling to various elementarys with me. I have been a guest reader for March's Reading Month throughout LPS, so I'll bring moose next time, I promise. So I apologize about that. I also wanted, on a serious note though, I did want to take a moment to address some of the chaos that occurred during our last council meeting. It's important for me to express an apology for letting some of that unprofessionalism to occur. You know, our role as council members is to serve the community with respect, integrity, and collaboration. And even though there were a lot of, you know, emotions were high, it did not reflect, I think, the values or the standards that our constituents expect out of us. And, you know, we have to remember, our conduct sets the tone at these meetings and reinforces the trust placed in us by our constituents. So I just wanted to say, I'm committed to ensuring that this does not happen again. Moving forward, I'll make sure that I'm vocal on mic to try to bring order back and make sure that we stay in our decorum and the Robert's rules are followed. And I just wanted to state that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to Council Buzinski for getting some of those troops here. I get really excited. I know Councilman McCullough has made it a point to get some of our young people involved in the Pledge of Allegiance and I love seeing our young students getting involved or setting the pledge. We live in the best country in the world and I love to see our young students pledge allegiance to the greatest flag. And I do appreciate you guys continuing that effort of our, of our young ones. I think the resident left, I had a few calls for some of the trees that they're referring to, but I can't, I don't know if they're here or not though. As far as I know, there's been no projects proposed yet. But in Livonia, you are allowed to cut down trees on your private property. You cannot cut down trees on public land, city, right away. But if you do have trees on your private property, whether it be your house or whether it be a piece of land, you are allowed to cut those trees down. But I know of no official plans have been presented before the council. You pay property taxes, you pay for your land, you buy your land, you pay property insurance on it. And if you want to remove trees on your land, you should be allowed to do so. And then lastly, but most importantly, is Wednesday, the city council will be having a committee meeting. I know one of the residents spoke about the importance of committee meetings. Committee meetings serve as a way for council members to have, in a way, informal meetings, but really get down to nitty-gritty details about particular topics. This Wednesday, we're going to hold the 15th or so committee meeting on the Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure that will be discussing the further plans of Five Mile and Farmington, the Civic Center. As many residents know, the city council and thousands of residents worked on Livonia Vision 21, 2017, 2018. That plan was adopted and unanimously voted on by the city council. Livonia Vision 21 calls out a few different areas of the community. One of those specifically is Five Mile and Farmington to redevelop it into a town square, downtown Civic Center campus. So the city council's had a number of meetings over the last year. City councils worked really hard on these meetings and there's a ton of information. Unfortunately, when information is maybe shared on, on social media or our quick conversations, you're not going to get the full depth, the full scope of such a dense plan. Wednesday's meeting, March 12th, here in the city council chambers. It's going to be a long meeting, but if you want to learn more about maybe the start of how this all transpired to where we are today will be a great opportunity. There's not going to be a lot of back and forth, but what there will be is a lot of detailed information to kind of lay out the full picture, the full scope of work, so to speak, for you, the residents. So if you'd like to participate, please do. These committee meetings, again, serve as kind of informal measure, so they're not televised. They're a little bit more relaxed, but there's a ton of information that is shared at these meetings. So bring some popcorn, you're going to be there for a while, probably. So don't make any plans because it's going to be a long meeting, but I'm looking forward to a lot of great information. And thank you so much to the council members here. I mean, we got full-time jobs and families and every one of the council members here have worked really hard to attend all of these meetings. And thanks to the administration for making so many meetings available to the council. So thanks, Mr. President, I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Toy.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. On a, on a kind of not so happy note, I want to announce that former Councilman Joe Laura had fallen on the ice a few weeks ago and hit his head pretty hard. Some of the reports that are coming in require all of us to say a little prayer or many prayers for Joe. He's taken ill. As many of you may know, Joe Laura served here for, geez, at least a couple of terms. I know he served with Mayor Brosnan and myself as well. And if you want to talk about some meetings that were wild, you should review those tapes with Joe Laura on them and God bless him. He fought for things he believed in and he was on our Livonia School Board and he was a military guy as well and served in Desert Storm and did a lot of fabulous things for this community. And please keep his wife and his family in your prayers as you pray. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on council? I got a couple announcements. So this, starting this Friday, Livonia Hockey Association is hosting the Tier Three Girls Hockey Tournament for the State Championships, which our Livonia 10 Unites are going to be competing. We've got a few tough games, but I'm planning on posting some, the schedule online. It's right at Eddie Edgar. I mean, it's teams from all around the state, especially girls, which is kind of even cooler to see because the game is just growing, it's exploding. And I tell you what, man, they are a lot more physical than the boys. I'll come and watch and see. They listen more too, which is kind of wild too. But big deal for Livonia, great thing for Eddie Edgar Ice Arena in LHA. And hopefully, our girls can go out there and do pretty well. So that'll be good.
I heard they can skate better than you too, Mr. President.
Listen, at this point, I put the training wheels back on, I'm just happy to be there.
That's true. I just want to commend you for doing the job you do with young women. When I was growing up, they didn't let us play sports. They thought it was kind of bad for women to do that. I gotta, I gotta say, you're there every weekend or most weekends and I know your daughter is real active as well. And you're to be commended for that and they need male role models like that as well. So kudos to you.
No, I appreciate it. But yeah, if anybody's list looking for something to do, it's going to be a party going on for three days right here in our backyard. So feel free to jump up, check out the game. The second thing I want to give kudos out to is the Hardey's Family Trust recently gave an astounding, just a shy under $275,000 to various organizations and service groups around the community. Going back, I was privileged because I served on the Board of Directors for Livonia Hockey. We received a check for $10,000. And you total up $274,830. It's remarkable. And I know that those kind of go through, you know, Bob Hardey's, you know, we definitely miss him, he was someone that was a huge leader in the community. And now we've got, you know, obviously Dan MacGyver and some of the Hardey's Family Trust. It's just selfless, you know, $200 and a quarter million right to charity. So you ever see the Hardey's Family Trust, they never look for anything in return. It's just going right into the community bill, it's incredible. So shout out and kudos to the Hardey's Family Trust for helping out a lot of these service groups. And with that, I'm going to get back to the fun things I'm supposed to be doing. And with that, I'm going to get back to the fun things I'm supposed to say, is new data on Item 3 and 13. We already went over the retirees Wednesday, we already hit that. And with that being said, I'm going to jump right into reports from the mayor and other city officials. And right now, I can say we have communication from the Department of Finance dated February 21st, 2025, forwarding the department purchase report. That was the month ending December 31st, 2024, and January 31st, 2025. We also have communication, again, from the Finance Department dated February 21st, forwarding various financial statements of the city of Livonia for months ending in September 2024 and October 2024. With that being said, I'm going to jump right to the consent agenda item. Items 1 through 12 on the consent agenda will be moved on as one item. These items were previously studied and determined to be non-controversial. Counsel, do I have motion?
So moved.
Mr. President, may I ask first?
We have support.
I'll remove my motion.
Well.
I would like to remove Item Number 3 from the consent agenda and put it on the regular agenda. Support.
Support.
Yes. So first, some background, that item is a proposed ordinance amendment related to consolidating precincts, a request from the Clerk's Office. This is a time-sensitive matter for the Clerk's Office. They need this done by April 1st. So if we're able to then vote on, or provide a first read tonight, that will provide them with the action they need to meet their deadlines.
All right. So we're looking at Item Number 3, right?
Yes.
Yep. So we're going to yank that off the consent, we're going to make it the new number, the new Number 13. All right? Counsel, with the exception of that, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
That's a photo finish. I'm just going to, you guys pick one. They were all in, the motion maker of Rob Donovan, and then they were photo finished.
We'll give it to Sheil.
Give it to Linda.
Yeah.
Oh, Linda.
Any comments from the audience on the consent agenda? Mr. King got two minutes.
Yeah. The Item Number 7, clear-cut tree removal for New Bird Village Expansion Project. I don't know how many of you guys have, I don't know if any of you have walked those woods, have been over there. There is old-growth pine trees, there's many old-growth healthy trees, and you're serving in Tree City. So I would suggest you clear that property in two phases. One, there's lots of scrub in there, get rid of all the garbage, and mark all the healthy trees, see how it lines up with the new development. I mean, why are you cutting down healthy trees? I want to push back against Rob a little bit about the trees. Yeah, they're on your private property, but we can't live without trees. I mean, trees are very, very important. Most of the surrounding communities have canopy, tree canopy ordinances that don't allow you to cut down healthy trees without having a conversation. This is something that we need to look at in Livonia. We should have a tree canopy ordinance in Tree City. Secondly, eight, I'm surprised this is on the consent agenda. You're spending $93,000 for somebody to tell you if the barn at Greenmead is in rough shape. Okay, I will do that for free. I'll walk in there, and I'll show you all the problems, and you don't have to spend $93,000. The last three years, you spent over $10 million on consulting fees. It's ridiculous. That barn is in such rough shape, you're going to spend $93,000, they're going to say it's going to cost you a million to fix it up, you're going to knock it down. Just, you know, use the money to knock it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to note, for the residents watching, for the expenditures of $93,623, I know there was some conversation at the study meeting that went in depth on that particular item, and there was a grant that the city was eligible for, so that's not $93,000, ends up being roughly $60-some thousand. And that is to hire an architect that will do architectural work on buildings. There was a considerable amount of discussion on that. So if anybody that works in construction, whether they're talking about rehabilitation and/or new developments, it's normal to hire an architect that will do architectural work on the plans and go from there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Can I push back?
No, I wish. You could wait till the next meeting.
Rob, meet me at the library, we'll have a nice.
Your time's over.
Councilman Morgan.
Yeah, I also believe that's a historical building, so it's not as simple as knocking that down.
Thank you. Two minutes. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Christopher Martin, the great state of Michigan. This is on Number 5 on the consent agenda. It was Number 6 the last meeting. And this is in reference to lockbox services for water billing payments. Okay? And this was brought forth by our chief accountant, and there was not really a clear explanation, but somehow there's a lockbox involved, and there's some bank that's going to do the, cover the bill payment or something, okay? But it was really one of the, once again, a poor presentation by a city employee. But Carrie put forth that it be put on the agenda, on the consent agenda this evening, and really, there was no clear explanation on that whatsoever. So if she wants to give a clear explanation, I would wish that that take place.
Are you finished, Mr. Martin?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Councilman Toy.
Ms. Chair, we've been using a lockbox for a long time. Help me out, Sheil. As treasurer and past treasurers, I know we used a lockbox, and I'm sure you did, too, because you came in after I did, right?
Right. The Water Department, the Water Department uses the lockbox for people that when you mail your payments in, goes to a lockbox. They stopped using the one they were using for a couple of years, but I believe that they have found that that's not, they're not able to keep up with the payments that come in.
Right.
So that's why they want to go back to the lockbox that they're proposing now. And this is just for water bills, it's not for tax payments, it's just for the water bills.
Yeah, I understand that. If it was, if it was tax payments, it would be going to a different department. Okay, I understand that completely.
You have 40 seconds anyway, so you're good.
Okay, but.
39, actually.
Well, okay, there you go. She never really explained, though, the need for it, okay? Did we, did somebody retire?
No, Ms. Chair.
I mean, well, right now, right now, different people are speaking for that particular individual who should have gave a clear and precise presentation when she was over there, okay? And she didn't do that whatsoever. None of you asked at that time, now that I brought it up, now there's all this information that's going to be flowing out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Mr. President, for what's worth, I got a pretty clear and concise presentation. There's a ton of information in the packet, so I was pretty sure what I was voting on. Thank you, Mr. Resident.
Nope, all good, all good. Any more communication on that item?
No, other than the Treasurers, the office used to take those water bills, and we put them upstairs, because as Linda said, there were so many. I think, in all due respect to Mr. Martin, I think most of us understood, and with, like Councilman Donovan said, we had all the background and information, maybe we could have been clearer on that. If so, sorry about that, but honestly, that's why it went on consent.
All right. Anything else from council? All right. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll on the consent agenda now through 12 items, correct?
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Sheil.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the consent agenda carries 7 to 0. I'm now going to move on to the new unfinished business. Item Number 13 is a request for consideration of a proposed ordinance amendment, comes to us from the Office of the City Clerk, to amend all sections of Title 1, Chapter 1. Dot 08 Election Precincts, to permanently consolidate precincts, to reduce costs, and streamline the process for voters. Counsel.
I'd like to offer a first read.
We have first read. Are there any objections from council? Anything from the audience?
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to ask law, could we invoke an emergency on that, to give it second reading?
You can.
We can't. So you could go second reading as well. I've seen that done before.
If there's no objections, I'll offer a second read.
Oh.
All right.
Now we can vote out.
So we need a support. So we have support matters of discussion. Madam Clerk, would you want to just give a quick little overview on what this is, just for people that might have not been at the study?
So what we proposed was a precinct consolidation, similar to what we do in our odd years. We're taking the number of precincts from 44 down to permanently 26. It will allow more voters per location, but based on voter trends in the last two years, we see less and less people going to their precincts, more and more are voting absentee, and more are voting at our early voting site, and that number is anticipated to continue to climb this year.
Thank you.
So it'll save us a lot of money each election.
Very good proactive approach. Nice work. Anything else from council? Oh.
So this information is in our council packet that we have for tonight and from last study meeting, correct?
It is.
And once this goes through, then you'll have the information on your website.
We will, well, we're doing first read, second read, and then we will have it all, all the maps have to be withdrawn, everything has to be redone, and that will be hitting our website probably within the next 30 days. The goal is April 1st, that's our deadline for the county.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilman Toy. Thank you. Councilwoman Sheil.
To Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, I meant to ask you this earlier. In the mail, I don't know which day it was, I got my voter registration card for Buchanan, so that will change, is what you're saying?
Only certain locations will change. We did permanently eliminate Clarenceville Middle School. That location will now vote at the Clarenceville High School directly across the street. And then we eliminated Cleveland as a voting location, it was a standalone. But there's very little changes as far as where you'll vote, but all voters will get a new registration card once this goes through.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Donovan.
Thanks, Mr. President. To our city attorney, when we invoke the emergency clause like we're doing this evening, I'm completely fine with it. We are still having to post the ordinance in the legal news, or how does that work?
Yes, we still post.
So we'll post it for the standard period, and then the administration will sign it, and it'll become the new ordinance?
Yes.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Cool. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Sheil.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. Wanted to try to beat your decile limit there.
I hope.
And the motion carries 7 to 0. Thank you. Moving on to Item Number 14 is a waiver petition, comes to us from the Planning Commission in reference to Petition 2024-12-02-20, submitted by Nene's Little Angels Daycare, requesting waiver use approval to operate a daycare nursery at 28275 Five Mile Road. Counsel.
So moved.
Support.
Support, discussion?
I think.
Mr. President, I know our city treasurer's here, and I was hoping if we get an update, there was some conversation about if their past two property taxes were paid before we took a vote, so it'd be nice to hear an update.
Good evening, Counsel. Susan Nash, Livonia City Treasurer. Yes, the taxes were paid by February 28th, it was paid by the current owner of the building, so they were taken care of.
Thank you to our hard-working Treasury team, appreciate it.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else? Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is the petitioner here? Oh, I'll let them come up. It's a quick question.
Hi, if you could just do name and address again for the record.
Good evening, my name is Shanita Farmer, my address is 17105 Inkster Road, Redford, Michigan.
Thank you, and I'm sure you're relieved about the taxes.
Michelle Brandt, I live at 25977 Cathedral in Redford.
So I know at the study, there was a lot of discussion about that South Side Play Area, and it looks, in our packet, it looks like you made some significant changes. I just thought maybe for the record, you'd want to tell us about those.
My clerk, you take this up here to dislodge all that information, but we took everything into consideration to move back, I think it was Mr. Rob, Dominic?
Mr. Donovan, yeah.
Donovan, with the playground, extending it back to the wall, which we thought was fair to house that many children. So that was pretty much it.
Yeah, no, the safety, it looks great. I mean, I'm looking at the plans, the safety concerns that you took into consideration. I really appreciate that, and we're excited for you to bring this business to our community.
Thank you for having us, we're excited to be here.
Wanted to give you that opportunity to kind of talk about the upgrades that you made to it, and we appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Sheil.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the motion carries 7 to 0. Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate, we appreciate you all, thank you so much.
Have fun, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Item Number 15 is a request to amend the AIA agreement with PCI Daily, comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation. A change in the GPM, GMP to $26,220,610.33, and a project scope for the addition of a new roof over the main and Mac gyms at the Jackie Kurski Recreation Center from unexpected, from the unexpected fund balance of Parks and Recreation. Counsel.
Mr. President, I'll offer an approving.
Support.
The floor is yours.
Mr. President, I know our Parks Rec Director's here, so I'll give him an opportunity to speak, but from one perspective, when we see GMPs being asked to be increased naturally, I'm skeptical of it, and wasn't really excited, and I'm hoping that this trend doesn't continue. I think our Parks Rec Director is doing a great job as our new construction manager on this project. With that being said, at our study, you talked about, there was some cost savings here to change the roof on the rec center portion while you're doing some of the roof enhancements in the new senior center. So I can understand that and appreciate that, you're actually looking for ways to save. The roof is going to have to be replaced one way or another, and I'd hate to spend more money a few years from now replacing that roof, when we could have done it while more money a few years from now replacing that roof when we could have done it while the roof on the adjacent building is being finished. So great job to you and your team. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel, anything further? Audience, any communication on this item? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Oh, geez.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Sheil.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the item carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
We're going to move on to item number 16 is a request to amend the architectural contract through the qualification-based selection, this QBS process with Hubble, Roth, and Clark. Comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation for out-of-scope services related to design of the senior centers, senior wellness center and recreation center improvements projects. Counsel?
So move. Number 15, so move.
Support. That's a tie as well. Go with, let's give it the carry for the support. Floor is yours, if you want it.
Not necessarily.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Anything from the audience? Mr. King, two minutes.
Yeah, this, this was an RFP that went out, so it's a, much people bid on this. And then you come back after the fact and ask for more money. This was the low bidder that I believe was awarded this Ted, I believe. And so, there are some companies that come in at low bid, and then over the course of the project, keep raising it, change orders, and end up being the same as people that weren't low bid. I think this sets a horrible precedent. If this is your bid, honor your bid. We have a tsunami of hurt coming to Michigan with all these tariffs and trade wars, and specifically in lumber and building materials. And so I think if you let this slide, you're going to see about three more of these before the, before, before the rec centers, or the senior centers done.
Thank you, Mr. King. I got Vice President, then I got Councilman Donovan, and then Councilwoman Toy.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, and we actually had a lot of discussion about this at the study meeting. We, we beat up Mr. Davis pretty badly on this, and he'll attest to that. But I believe it was Mr. Donovan asked, is this it? Or is this what we're going with? And, you know, some, I think it was some interior design changes, really, that is causing this additional cost, and, you know, we have to, we have to take care of it. And I believe also at the time, Mr. Davis stated that there would only be at most one more bulletin that we'd have to look at as far as all of this. But I'll defer to you if you'd like to address some of the changes.
Councilman Tashnik, thank you very much. I mean, I think, and what I did state at the study as well is, even these changes, this is still the low bid by over 20%. While we don't like to see, you know, change orders and things like that, a construction project of this size, it's fairly normal. And again, these are, these are minimal changes that we're asking for to the, the contract that was done through the QBS system. And again, I would like to reiterate, this, even with these changes, is the low bid by a significant amount. So it's not that this is a bait and switch. We're taking someone that was a low bid, and then they're increasing it, and now they'd be, they wouldn't be the low bid. This HRC would still be the low bid by a significant amount on this project. So that's why we came and asked for these changes. Again, there has been changes in the project scope over the period of time, and this includes purchasing the LPS property, changing the design from there, interior design changes that have gone on. And again, I believe we would have one more bulletin, and I feel confident we'd be able to handle it under our existing scope of services. So I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Thank you. Councilman Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to our council vice president. You know, the study meetings are so critical because a lot of the meat and potatoes, the discussions take place there. That's why we study the items in depth at regular meetings. These are the actual legal way we vote and approve or deny things. So there may not necessarily be a ton of discussion at regular meetings, because this is the formal step in approving or denying a particular item. And there was a ton of discussion on this item at the study, as there should be. We hold the purse strings, and we have to make sure that our department heads and our vendors are not going off the deep end and spending money. And I think council has made it clear to our department heads, and I think our department heads have done a great job in making sure we continue to be fiscal stewards of the projects. And it was important to note at that study that we did hire HRC before a lot of the, the new design elements took place, the, the full scope of work happened here. So it was understood that they were going to come back and, and have some changes later on. That's what happens when we've been as aggressive as we have been on getting really good prices upfront before all of the totality of the work has been considered. And then after the fact, you might see a situation like this where they have to come back now that they have the full picture of what we're doing here, and this is one of these examples. So thanks to the department head, and thanks to the residents that do come to these study meetings and learn about a lot of the things that happen at the study meetings. They're also all available on YouTube, online, and on TV. So if you have a particular question, always feel free to reach out to any one member, and we'll love to talk to you about it, but also feel free to go back there on YouTube, the YouTube world, and find all sorts of information there, too. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'm, I got Councilman Toy, then I got Councilman Morgan.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, HRC, have we had any problems with them in the past, or anything you know that they've done work in the city as far as the architect kinds of issues?
They've done a number of projects in the city.
Right.
And we've always had, really, they've been one of the high-performing architectural firms that we've had through the QBS system.
That's, that's what I wondered. I, I heard what some people have said, depending on how, you know, the federal folks, you know, trickle down certain things, whether it's tariffs or fees, or what the heck, who knows? I know you're cognizant of the fact that we don't want to do cost overruns, and I think I asked you that question during the study, meaning that I had heard we were, you know, over in, in some cases. So I just want to make sure, and I know you're doing a fantastic job, just make sure we're not going over as much as possible, obviously. Everybody's getting a little tight on money, and, you know, residents, I think, are a little nervous about that kind of stuff, too. And, you know, we all hear on TV every day how, you know, things are happening, and some are real good things, some are real bad, and some are, is a bunch of BS, and some isn't. So, you know, you know how it goes.
I believe, Councilman Toy, you had asked me at the study meeting about a rumor you had heard.
Yes.
Which placed us $1 million over budget on this project.
Right.
And I had stated, if we, that was true, I would have been before this body, long before this, asking for a change in GMP. We are not over budget. We are on budget.
Right.
We, of course, have these two bulletins to go out, and one more, which our construction manager bids out. But right now, we feel we have an adequate contingency available to us based upon everything we're seeing. As far as tariffs and other things goes, I would simply say that's why we want to expedite this as much as possible.
Correct.
Right? The sooner we bid this out, the sooner we get these materials, the better off we're going to be. The sooner we finish these designs, the better we're going to be.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think he said under budget? Is that what I heard?
All right.
Councilman Morgan.
At. Councilman Donovan, at.
Yeah, Mr. Davis, I have a question regarding this. Was this, this something we spurred? Was it a design change that we decided, like, for instance, we wanted another bathroom, or we wanted a kitchen put in, or something like that? I just wanted a little bit of clarification on how this came about. You know, did we, we spur this and build it in knowing that we're going to make probably some changes as things go on? So...
Yeah, I think we, we definitely did, and there were several decisions along the way that led us to, to this point. Again, one being the purchase, the acquisition of the LPS property changed the design scope. The other thing is, we went through, and Councilman Morgan, you might remember, we went through a value engineering process where we tried to, to lower that GMP as much as we could. And we did scale back a significant amount of the project. That changed designs. And now some of this is interior design work, where we're trying to, to finalize fixtures and furnishings as much as we can to make this the best product we can for our senior population. So it's, it's a multitude of reasons and different changes that have led us to this point.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I'm just going to, you know, and before we go with that, I just wanted to clarify some of the items for Mr. King. So this is obviously not, I wouldn't even call it a scope change, this is a, a way to, I guess, push forward a capital improvement item. And rest assured, I did review the specs. This is a 60-mill white TPO reflectiveness. It's got added insulation on it, which currently we don't, I think we have an R10 right now that gets us up to an R22. And this is to basically help us with the entire envelope of the building. I think it was a, a chance to use, and use services that are currently on site rather than a huge crazy scope creep on it. So just, just for reference on that. With that being said, this council, do we have any other comments, concerns, discussion? Audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Sheil.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the item carries seven to zero. We're going to move on to, the new number 17 is new business. Is a request to renew the Western Wayne County Police Mutual Aid Agreement. This comes to us from the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness to continue our partnership with Western Wayne County Police Agencies. Good evening, Mr. Khan, how are you?
Very good, Council President, members of council. Glad to be here. Brian Khan, Director of Emergency Management and Homeland Security for the City of Livonia. Here on behalf of Police Chief Garolsky for Livonia Police Department. Asking your authorization to enter into the renewed, or renew the Western Wayne County Police Mutual Aid Agreement. We went through and revised this in 2024 to look at streamlining and making it more straightforward, some of the information we had in there from the 2017 agreement itself. Information itself has just been refined down that allows for more clarification on the Western Wayne County Police Chiefs and the 22 departments that are involved in this, and who will be liaison officer working with Incident Command should something be called out. And we also wanted to verify the, the personnel power numbers that each, each of these 22 departments would be providing if this mutual aid agreement were...
Appreciate it.
Taken into account.
Counsel, do, I have direction.
Yes, I'd like to recommend this to be moved on the consent agenda.
We could do you one better. You're offering approving. Do we have support?
Support.
We got support from Take Your Pick. I would give it to Vice President. The floor is yours. Do you go?
Yep. Well, I've, you know, I've known Mr. Khan here for many, many years. I know he's very thorough. I did review this. This is a, this is something that we've done before, and it's, it's pretty standard, but it's also very technical and needs to be reviewed thoroughly, and I know Brian Khan has done that well better than I can. So I would, I would say that I would definitely be a yes vote on this. This is something that needs to be done, and we definitely need to work with other communities around us to make sure that things run smoothly in case of a major incident.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well said. Counsel, any other comments? Audience, any comments on this? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Sheil.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the item carries seven to zero. Mr. Khan, it's a pleasure to see you, as always.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Your item was passed. Going to move on to item number 18 is a acceptance of donations that comes to us from the Department